Okay, this meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSN: 4-6, at SEC, notice of which was sent to the record on Star Ledger and was posted on the Municipal Bolson Board.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Here.
Councilmember Vitale is absent. Mayor LaBrosse?
Here. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we start, I'd like to, let's take a moment of silence. Albert Dibb, our head of economic development for the city of Hackensack, lost his mother a few days ago. Mary Dibb, so if we could, let's have a moment of silence. Thank you. And if you would, please keep the Dibb family in your prayers at this time. Thank you. Okay, we have some proclamations to do tonight. All right. I do have one proclamation that doesn't bother anybody being here than going to read. And it reads, whereas Congress designated the third week in March to be National Poison Prevention Week in 1961 to help raise awareness of the dangers of poisonous medicines, household chemicals, and other substances; whereas poison centers will focus the public's attention on identifying poisoning hazards and prevention as all people and even pets are at risk; and whereas half of all reported poison exposures involve children five years old and younger, the majority of poisoning deaths occur in adults aged 20 to 59; and whereas the New Jersey Poison Information and Education System provides free expert medical advice, drug information, and poison prevention education to New Jersey residents through the 800-222-1222 Poison Help hotline; whereas we encourage all residents to program the hotline number into their phones because a rapid response can make a difference in preventing serious injury and saving lives. Now therefore, I, John P. LaBrosse Jr., mayor of the city of Hackensack, along with the members of this council, do hereby proclaim the week of March 17th through 23rd, 2019, as National Poison Prevention Week in the city of Hackensack. And we all know how important it is to keep some of those chemicals, especially out of young people's hands. Some of the products we buy are, can be very dangerous. Mr. Sims, any order? Okay, no order. Could I please have Omar Bailey come up, please? Are you here?
How are you, sir? Very good, thank you.
So we have a proclamation for you, sir, that reads, whereas Omar Bailey was born on October 22nd, I was the 24th, mentally, 1995 in Bronx, New York. Omar moved to Hackensack when he was in the fourth grade. He attended Nellie K. Parker School, the Hackensack Middle School, and Hackensack High School. And whereas Omar was acknowledged as one of the top 20 African-American scholars in his 2013 high school graduating class, he received an academic scholarship to attend the University of Albany, where he entered and won a business plan competition for a recovery drink that he is currently attempting to introduce into the marketplace. And whereas Omar was among a small group of sophomores selected to work for Loop Capital on Wall Street during the summer of 2015. In 2017, Omar graduated from the University of Albany magna cum laude, earning a degree in business administration with a focus on entrepreneurship. Today Omar holds the position of manager at Paula's Soul Food Cafe located right here in Hackensack, where he is helping to build his family business. Now therefore, I, John P. LaBrosse Jr., mayor of the city of Hackensack, along with the members of the Hackensack City Council, do hereby recognize Omar Bailey for his achievements and contributions to the community. Congratulations, sir. And it's photo op time. Counsel? We're getting pretty good at this.
Want us to come down there, I guess?
You might as well all come down for the next view, so let's just stay here. And by the way, these, yes, all these proclamations are part of African-American, National African-American Month here in the United States. And we missed a meeting last month, and we did get to honor some people, but these people were on the second wave, so we're happy to have you here tonight, so.
Good. Thank you.
The parents come up here and take a picture with them?
Folks? By the way, the young lady taking pictures in the front row was just her birthday, I believe, this past few days. Happy birthday, Tiff.
Happy birthday.
What's up, ma'am? How are you? A pleasure.
Congratulations.
Ma'am, congratulations.
Hold on, lady in the back in the red. Pass, you can put a front of you on, they can bite you.
Keep going. Keep going. Keep going. Okay, that's fine.
All right. Good, guys, thank you. Congratulations. John Earl Harrison, please come up, please. Another Nellie Parker rep, huh? How are you? And we have a proclamation for you as well. And it reads, whereas John Earl Harrison Jr. was born on July 29th, 1992, in Hackensack, New Jersey, to his parents Melissa Harrison and John Earl Harrison Sr. And whereas John attended Nellie K. Parker Elementary School, in Hackensack Middle School, and graduated Hackensack High School in 2010, where he was known for being outstanding track, field high jumper, and wrestling. And whereas John attended Florida Memorial University from 2010 to 2012, and there he received his nickname Whiz, due to his resemblance to famous rap artist Wiz Khalifa. And whereas John is a drummer at Trinity Baptist Church, and he also plays at Mount Olive and New Hope Church. He also enjoys playing basketball at Northeastern Sports for the following teams, The Bad Boys, Primetime, Caves, and Rack City. And he looks forward to following his dream of playing professionally overseas in the next two years. And whereas John holds the position of manager at Five Guys in Lodi, and whereas John's famous quote, "Family is the most important thing in my life. They keep my head above water every day." He is excited to share the news of his baby boy on the way. Congratulations. Now therefore, I, John P. LaBrosse Jr., mayor of the city of Hackensack, along with the members of the Hackensack City Council, do hereby recognize John Earl Harrison Jr. for his achievements and contributions to the community presented this 12th day of March 2019. Thank you, sir. Okay. Pictures? You got some people you want to bring up?
Take one picture regularly.
Yeah, but we center?
No. No, you need to come this way. You two should be in front of the picture of Oratan to be centered, and you're not. You need to come to the...
Just listen, follow the direction.
You didn't learn anything in 41 years?
I got the same name, too, so that's why I'm not listening.
Just block it out.
John, family friends come up here real quick.
Okay, get over here and arrange this now.
We have to come this way, come back, John, step back.
Party planner.
No, he should be.
We should be in the middle, you should be on that side. That's close enough.
Put this guy first, put this guy.
Good? Awesome, thank you. One more. We know this guy. Little bit. Okay, would Mr. Navarro W. Gray please come forward? How are you, buddy? Great, good to see you. All right, good to see you. We all know this guy because he's already got a building named after him in town, just so you know that. But whereas W., I'm sorry, whereas Navarro W. Gray is a lifelong resident of Hackensack, New Jersey, he is a product of the Hackensack Public School System and received his Bachelor of Science degree from Hampton University in Virginia, where he graduated cum laude with honors. And whereas Navarro Gray received his Juris Doctorate degree with a concentration in intellectual property from Hofstra University School of Law located in Long Island, New York. And whereas in 2013, he started his own law practice, the Gray Law Firm, and made history by becoming the first African-American municipal public defender for the city of Hackensack. And whereas in 2018, Navarro Gray became the first African-American public defender for Bergen County Central Municipal Court. And whereas Navarro Gray maintains his private law practice across the street from City Hall and the Gray Building, which was named after him in 2017. That was a pretty good day. Now therefore, I, John P. LaBrosse Jr., mayor of the city of Hackensack, along with the members of the Hackensack City Council, do hereby recognize Mr. Navarro W. Gray for his achievements and contributions to our community. Thank you, sir. Dallas, would you like to come up? I've known Dallas Gray and his son Navarro since Navarro was probably seven or eight years old, coached him in baseball when he was younger, and was a very good athlete. How are you, sir? It's good to see you.
That's good.
Awesome, sir. Let's give all the applause. Does anybody want to say anything? Omar?
You want me to go up there? Is anybody here?
Yeah, no, come up here.
Omar, thank you. I just want to thank the city of Hackensack for the honor, as it means a great deal to me, to be recognized by the city I grew up in. And it's also humbling to be honored for Black History Month as well. Over the years, I've had teachers, guidance counselors, coaches, and peers that have been a crucial element to the person that I am today. I've had family who has continued support for me, has also provided me with an opportunity to be a part of something special. So with that, I'll continue to strive to be an example for the black community, as well as for the city of Hackensack.
All righty. Stand right here, is that a way?
There's a mic there over there.
Oh, the mic. Or you can talk at the podium, it's your choice. You can come up here and talk there. There you go.
Don't drop it, it's expensive.
How y'all doing? First of all, I just want to thank God first, because without Him, none of this is possible. I just want to thank my family for always supporting me, my friends. I got some real good friends. It's kind of hard to have friends around these times, but, especially my friend Dorian, me and him been friends for about 15 years, 16 years. And it's just good, it's really good to have friends, and it's really good to have a good mother. Mom, you already know you hold it down, my baby mother, my sister. And obviously, I want to thank Sims, because Sims knew me for, since I was a little kid. And I've been a pretty good kid, and it's good to get honored for something like this. Actually, I don't even, honestly, I don't know what they really say, because it's kind of shocking to me right now. But, um, thank you. I'm not about to cry, but thank you. I'm a little nervous.
You don't go to Paula's, you can go to Five Guys.
I guess these youngsters are calling you out, Navarro.
Yeah. And if you want to rap, you come see Navarro.
I wasn't going to say anything, but I was trying to get everybody, you know, finished. But, no, I really appreciate the city, the mayor, deputy mayor, city council, for the opportunity to be here, for honoring me. I grew up here, I left in, I want to say, 1997. I lived in Virginia, Atlanta, New York, and then I came back here. And I've noticed like a great change and difference since I've been back. I've been back since maybe, I want to say like six years, and I'm in all the areas. I see like a lot of people on Central, Downtown, I'm everywhere, from whether they quote the nicer areas to the unquote areas that need to be developed. And I see them being developed every day. My office is right across the street, I drive all over Hackensack, all over New Jersey. I think you guys are doing a wonderful job. I can't wait till every, all of the new condos and apartments are filled, so that it brings more business and hopefully more clients for me, and, you know, and, but I definitely appreciate it. Thank you.
There's no minutes, correct?
Right.
We'll move to the city manager's report.
Good evening. This is the city manager's report for March 12th, 2019. There will be a goal-setting meeting scheduled for March 20th at 4:00 p.m. in this council chambers at 4:00 p.m. on March 20th. The community beef steak dinner is on March 14th between 6:00 and 9:00 p.m. at the Alon. The PBA, Chamber of Commerce, and Crime Stoppers are sponsoring this event. Please refer to the hackensack.org for more details. Building department updates, 62 notices written, 80 inspections made, 10 summonses issued, seven CCOs were done, nine Oprah requests were fulfilled. The DBW has hired an outside contractor to assist with pothole repairs. If you would like to report potholes, please call the pothole hotline at 201-646-8058. And today, as part of the State Street two-way conversion, the new bus stop was installed in front of City Hall. Obviously, there were some people that were disappointed that the old one was removed during the time, but it had to be done for construction, but the new one was installed. Quaykin and I haven't even been out to see it yet, but it is in, and hopefully it will serve the community well. And that would complete the city manager's report.
Thank you. Okay, right into business. Resolution 105-19.
This is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 1-2019, an ordinance to establish a new chapter of the Hackensack City Code entitled Drug-Free and Drunk Driving-Free Zones. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Okay. Need a motion to open to the public?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak on Resolution 105-19, please come forward. Seeing nobody from the public, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed. Need a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed.
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack County, Bergen Estate, New Jersey, that ordinance number 1-2019 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 106-19.
This is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 9-2019, an ordinance amending Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack Vehicles and Traffic to prohibit commercial truck parking in residential areas and tractor-trailer parking on city streets, parks, and municipal lots. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Okay, need a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance, please come forward.
And while he does that, just with respect to ordinance number 1-2019, we do need to send a copy of that to the Bergen County clerk and the Bergen County prosecutor, the copy of the map with a certified copy of the resolution, and to our municipal prosecutor as well.
Could you give your name and address to the clerk, please?
Sure. Tom LoCicero, owner of All Points Auto and Towing, Inc., Hackensack, 314 Second Street.
Thank you.
I was up here earlier and questioning which streets were included in the ordinance that you're about to adopt, and I'm not sure if we have gotten complete clarification on whether Second Street was one of those streets where this ordinance would be in effect.
He's going to bring it up right now, I believe, on his laptop, which works a little better than his phone, I believe. Yep, I have it. So, and as we mentioned before, you know, there is this, this list of streets that, you know, we're not changing any of that in this ordinance, this is just simply to allow towing in addition to writing a ticket if they violate the existing provisions of the ordinance. You know, I'm looking to see, you know, it doesn't look like there have been any changes that would affect this schedule of parking over four trucks excluded. And again, you know, I'm just looking to see, you said Second Street specifically?
Correct.
And I'm just looking to see if that exists anywhere in 17055, so just give me a second here. But, because it certainly doesn't look like it. Yeah, Second Street's not referenced in this, this provision as well, so, you know...
Even though the ordinance says that it takes effect in residential areas, there is still smaller section of residential areas that it does take effect? Is that...
I mean, the ordinance itself specifically refers to any street enumerated in Chapter 17055. If it is not in there, we can't like say, well, because it's residential, that's a problem. If we believe that the streets need to be reviewed in 17055, and the last amendment to this was over 10 years ago, that someone looked at this and determined what streets we should exclude trucks over four tons on, you know, we can do that review, but in order to change it, we're going to have to go through the same process we went through here, which means we're going to have to draft an ordinance, put it up for first reading, have to have a hearing, have to have a second reading. We certainly have the right to do that, but as of right now, if the ordinance, if 17055 does not include a street, this change will not apply. And whatever parking restrictions that are applicable to Second Street in Chapter 170 has a bunch of them, you know, you can go online, Hackensack City Code is available on our website, you can go to Chapter 170, anybody can, anybody who's watching can, and they can go search for their street and see what, if any, parking restrictions exist on that street. And I would encourage you to do that. But with respect to this, it's not in there.
I got a question. I live over on Second Street by the railroad tracks, and there are tractor-trailers parked there day and night. Some get tickets, some don't get tickets.
Well, there's no, there's no overnight parking allowed, I believe, anywhere of that.
So these tractor-trailers can just stay there on the street all day?
I mean, you know, I, Chapter 170 is a huge ordinance. I mean, let's see here, there's a, there's a no parking certain hours, you know, in Section 2. And you said, what street are you looking at specifically?
Still Second Street.
Still Second Street.
The other end, though.
Close to towards the high school.
Yeah, so, so, you know...
Trails, I'm not talking about tow trucks.
Yeah, I'm trying to think where on Second Street, or is it...
You said railroad end.
He's down by the over, by the railroad trestle?
By the port of end.
Yeah, that's Section 17051 doesn't mention Second Street when it comes to no parking certain hours except during certain daytime hours, so I'm assuming that might be for street sweeping or something like that.
If we want to address tractor-trailers being there, especially overnight, that should be a separate, separate issue in this, because this was meant to be able to tow certain vehicles out of certain areas.
Yeah, I mean, if you look...
The daydream, or something like that.
I mean, Second Street, you know, also has, you know, some provisions, like you're not supposed to park on the east side of Second Street the entire length. It's completely no parking, that whole side of the street, right now. And then on the west side, there's, you know, from hillside to beach, no parking, you know, and some other more smaller things. So one side of Second Street, there should be no parking anyway.
There's definitely parking on the east side of Second Street.
That's between Essex and Atlantic.
Okay.
Over there by the hospital.
Oh, yes.
Because you got three parts to Second Street.
Yeah, that's a block between the, by the hospital.
No parking on the east side of Second Street between Essex and...
Because I know on the, on the east side, I'm sorry, on the north side from the trestle up, there's parking on the...
Both sides.
Both sides, yeah.
Well, I mean, right, right now, and again, our city code, when it comes to these traffic, you know, when we've gone reviewing these things and looked at changes, we found things that are anomalies, where, you know, it says one thing in one section, something else in another section, and whenever we spot that when we're doing a review, we do try and fix it. I will say, right now, Second Street, right now, according to the current city code online, suggests that there should be no parking on the east side for the entire length of Second Street.
Yeah, that's not right. There's something, that needs to be changed. That's, that's something we just stumbled on, because there's been parking on eastbound, or on the, well, the east side of Second Street for as long as I can remember.
Yep.
From the Second Street all the way to American Legion Drive.
Correct.
Ted, maybe we need to take a look at that, if there's signs there or whatever there is.
Oh, there's signs, there's signs you can park there.
I would just ask the governing body that if there is going to be a change there on Second Street, that you come and see the businesses. Some of these businesses have been there since the early 1920s. I mean, we're approaching 100 years on some of these businesses being in business there, so...
Two businesses, yeah, yep, yeah, tow company and a junkyard.
The junkyard has been there since 1925, long before there was any zoning laws. So, you know, the way, the way the properties are set up and the neighborhood has grown over the years with the residential, we have no choice but to bring our trucks out to the street to operate every day. At night, they all come in, they come inside the buildings or in the back of the yards, they're not spotted from the roadway whatsoever. We don't park anything on the street at night. But during the day, it's essential that we move the trucks out so we can operate.
Are there meters on the west side of Second Street?
No, no meters on Second Street.
Okay.
Except by the hospital.
Thank you very much.
I mean, you know, this might be a, you know, a longer-term project for the city's traffic professionals to look through this, because again, you, over the years, this is the ordinance that gets changed more than any other ordinance that I've seen in the time we've been here. We've probably made 10 changes to Chapter 170, includes the bus stops, the snow routes, you know, so this gets changed, and, you know, this might be something where, you know, a more comprehensive...
Well, the parking in that area is a necessity to the businesses and the residents and the people using the parks. I mean, there's, you know, there's absolutely no reason to take the parking off, so I wouldn't touch it, but the ordinance itself needs to be changed, or the code, because it's, it's wrong.
We are starting a recodification project.
Yeah, I mean, this is...
Going through, we'll, we can start with that chapter.
Yeah, I mean, what...
With the police department and have them...
You know, look, look through it and see, you know, where are things that don't seem to match up with what the reality is in place. I mean, look, at the end of the day, it's about enforcement. I mean, if there's something in there that shouldn't be in there, we can administratively say, you know, this is something that's an anomaly and not enforce it, but you don't want to have that, you know? If you can fix it and find it, you know, that certainly makes more sense.
If you look back, you're probably going to find that this came to be when they did the meters...
And then on the west side, there's, you know, from hillside to beach, no parking, you know, and some other more smaller things, so one side of Second Street, there should be no parking anyway.
There's definitely parking on the east side of Second Street.
That's between Essex and Atlantic.
Okay.
Over there by the hospital.
Oh, yes.
Because you've got three parts to Second Street.
Yeah, that's a block between the, by the hospital.
Yeah, no parking on the east side of Second Street between Essex and...
Because I know on the east side, I'm sorry, on the north side, from the trestle up, there's parking on the...
Both sides.
Both sides, yeah.
Well, I mean, right now, and again, our city code, when it comes to these traffic, you know, when we've gone reviewing these things and looked at changes, we found things that are anomalies, where, you know, it says one thing in one section, something else in another section, and whenever we spot that, when we're doing a review, we do try and fix it. I will say, right now, Second Street, right now, according to the current city code online, suggests that there should be no parking on the east side for the entire length of Second Street.
Yeah, that's not right. That needs to be changed, that's something we just stumbled on, because there's been parking on eastbound, or on the, well, the east side of Second Street for as long as I can remember.
Yep.
From Second Street all the way to American Legion Drive.
Correct.
Ted, maybe we need to take a look at that, if there's signs there or whatever there is.
Oh, there's signs, there's signs you could park there.
I would just ask the governing body that if there is gonna be a change there on Second Street, they come and see the businesses, some of these businesses have been there since the early nineteen twenties. I mean, we're approaching a hundred years on some of these businesses being in business there, so...
Two businesses, yep, 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 tow company and a junkyard.
The junkyard has been there since nineteen twenty-five, long before there was any zoning laws, so, you know, the way, the way the properties are set up and the neighborhood has grown over the years with the residential, we have no choice but to bring our trucks out to the street to operate every day. At night, they all come in, they come inside the buildings or in the back of the yards, they're not spotted from the roadway whatsoever, we don't park anything on the street at night, but during the day, it's essential that we move the trucks out so we can operate.
Are there meters on the west side of Second Street?
No, no meters on Second Street.
Okay.
Except by the hospital.
Thank you very much.
I mean, you know, this might be, you know, a longer-term project for the city's traffic professionals to look through this, because again, over the years, this is the ordinance that gets changed more than any other ordinance that I've seen in the time we've been here, we've probably made ten changes to chapter one seventy, includes the bus stops, the snow routes, you know, so this gets changed, and, you know, this might be something where, you know, a more comprehensive...
Well, the parking in that area is a necessity to the businesses and the residents and the people using the parks, I mean, there's absolutely no reason to take the parking off, so I wouldn't touch it, but the ordinance itself needs to be changed, or the code, because it's wrong.
We are starting a re-credification project.
Yeah, I mean, this is...
Going through, we can start with that chapter.
Yeah, I mean, what...
The police department and have them...
You know, look through it and see, you know, where are things that don't seem to match up with what the reality is in place, I mean, look, at the end of the day, it's about enforcement, I mean, if there's something in there that shouldn't be in there, we can administratively say, you know, this is something that's an anomaly and not enforce it, but you don't want to have that, you know, if you can fix it and find it, you know, that certainly makes more sense.
If you look back, you're probably gonna find that this came to be when they did the meters on Second Street by the hospital.
Yeah, because this suggests that Second Street can have meters on it.
Yeah.
In the code, right now, it suggests it can be.
And that's the only part that does have meters, but what they did was, when they probably instituted the no parking on the east side between Essex and Atlantic, they probably just said Second Street, east side, and left it like that, and that's a mistake.
Yeah, and again, you know, these changes took place a decade ago, long before, you know, any of you were...
Let's see, that was, I'm trying to think...
The Cancer Center opened.
No, it's that those meters were there way before the Cancer Center. Yep, probably back when Pavilion was built, it was like seventeen years.
Our intent is not to hurt any of the existing businesses.
I realize that.
And we'll certainly give it every consideration.
Yep.
And I served on a council, so I kind of know about ordinances and resolutions, and I just wanted to make sure that, you know, it's not interpreted, you know, everybody interprets things differently, and I didn't want to have a problem with, you know, all of a sudden now, we can't put anything on the street, you know, that's gonna really affect our businesses and people that work for us that are from the area, too.
Right, well, right now, you're good, and I think you're probably gonna stay good.
Thank you very much.
We have no intention of touching that, so, thank you. So where were we on that?
If anybody else wants to speak, otherwise, you need a motion.
Anybody else want to speak on this ordinance? Seeing no one, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed, motion to adopt the ordinance?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack County, Bergen and State of New Jersey, that ordinance number nine dash two thousand and nineteen has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you, resolution one oh seven dash nineteen.
This is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number ten dash two thousand and nineteen, and ordinance amending State Street redevelopment plan Block two oh nine, lots eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fifteen. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Okay, need a motion to open to the public?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed, anybody from the public who would like to speak on one oh seven dash nineteen, please come forward. Seeing no one from the public, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed, motion to adopt the ordinance?
Offer.
We get a second?
Second.
Second by Stephanie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack County, Bergen and State of New Jersey, that ordinance number ten dash two thousand and nineteen has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you, resolution one oh eight dash nineteen.
This is a resolution designating a redeveloper and authorizing redevelopment agreement with Hackensack Jefferson Urban Renewal LLC for sixty-eight Zabriski Street.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's it on that, resolution one oh nine dash nineteen.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number twelve dash two thousand and nineteen, and ordinance authorizing a thirty-year tax exemption for a market-rate rental apartment project to be constructed by Hackensack Jefferson Urban Renewal LLC, an urban renewal entity pursuant to the long-term tax exemption law NJSA forty A colon twenty dash one et sec for sixty-eight Zabriski.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance twelve dash two thousand and nineteen is introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on March twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen, at eight o'clock PM, or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached, at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be, and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law, with the notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Okay, thank you, resolution one ten dash nineteen.
This is a resolution concurring with the Planning Board's redevelopment investigation, regarding Block four eleven, lots sixteen and eighteen, four sixty-three, four seventy-three through four eighty-three Main Street, and designating it as an area in need of redevelopment for non-condemnation purposes.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed, resolution one eleven dash nineteen.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number thirteen dash two thousand and nineteen, and ordinance adopting four sixty-three Main Street redevelopment plan consisting of Block four eleven, lots sixteen and eighteen.
Need a motion, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance thirteen dash two thousand and nineteen is introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage, at a meeting to be held on April ninth, two thousand and nineteen, at eight o'clock PM, or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached, at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be, and she is hereby authorized and directed, to publish said ordinance according to law with the notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you, resolution one thirteen dash nineteen.
Uh, one twelve dash nineteen.
I'm sorry, one twelve.
That's okay. Resolution concurring with the Planning Board's redevelopment investigation regarding Block three oh three, Lot fourteen, seventeen Mercer Street, and designating it as an area in need of redevelopment for non-condemnation purposes.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, resolution one thirteen dash nineteen.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number fourteen dash two thousand and nineteen, and ordinance adopting seventeen Mercer Street redevelopment plan consisting of Block three oh three, Lot fourteen.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance fourteen dash two thousand and nineteen is introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on April ninth, two thousand and nineteen, at eight o'clock PM, or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached, at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be, and she is hereby authorized and directed, to publish said ordinance according to law with the notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Okay, we're polling one fourteen and one fifteen, okay?
Yes.
So next one would be resolution one sixteen dash nineteen.
This is a resolution authorizing tax refunds for duplicate payments, state board judgment, and a hundred percent tax-exempt veteran.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed, resolution one seventeen dash nineteen.
A resolution authorizing emergency temporary appropriation prior to the adoption of the budget for NJSA forty A colon four dash twenty.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, resolution one eighteen dash nineteen.
A resolution authorizing transfer of two thousand and eighteen budget appropriations.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed, resolution, I'm sorry, one nineteen dash nineteen.
Is a resolution adopting City of Hackensack surplus policy for fiscal two nineteen.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed, resolution one twenty dash nineteen.
A resolution authorizing establishment of a reserve for preliminary expenses for the Court Street Drainage Area Stormwater Management Project.
Need a motion?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed, motion one, I'm sorry, resolution one twenty-two dash nineteen, payment of bills.
I'm sorry, one twenty, you missed one twenty-one.
Oh, I'm sorry, resolution one twenty-one dash nineteen.
A resolution approving the memorandum of understanding between the City of Hackensack and the Hackensack Uniform Fire Officers Association, IAFF Local three one seven two AFLCIO CLC.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and now the payment of bills, one twenty-two dash nineteen.
A resolution authorizing the payment of bills.
Need a motion to pay the bills.
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed, okay, we're moving on to the consent agenda, which is resolution one twenty-three dash nineteen through one thirty-two dash nineteen, does anybody have a conflict here? I need to ask the City Council, I'm a member of UNICO, and there is a raffle license, should we pull that? I'm a UNICO member in Hackensack, and they're applying for a raffle license.
Yeah, I would recommend that.
Let's pull one thirty-two dash nineteen. Anybody else have any conflicts? Okay, seeing none, just pull the last one.
Okay, so, this consent agenda is considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion, any items requiring expenditure are supported by certification of availability of funds, any item requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda, and consent agenda items will be reflected in full in the minutes, including any exceptions and or additions. We pulled resolution one thirty-two dash nineteen to be voted on after the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of one twenty-three dash nineteen, which is a resolution authorizing release of escrow for sixty Oak Street project, resolution one twenty-four dash nineteen, a resolution authorizing release of escrow for various PSENG projects, resolution one twenty-five dash nineteen, a resolution authorizing release of performance bond for two ninety-third Street escrow project, resolution one twenty-six dash nineteen, which is a resolution awarding contract to Neglia Engineering for two thousand and nineteen overall roadway assessment, resolution one twenty-seven dash nineteen, a resolution awarding contract to Darmofalsky Engineering for Carver Park Tennis Court renovation, one twenty-eight dash nineteen is a resolution awarding contract to Darmofalsky Engineering for Stipe Park Dog Park Bathroom Renovation Project, one twenty-nine dash nineteen is a resolution awarding contract to Darmofalsky Engineering for M&amp;M Building renovation, clerk of the works, resolution one thirty dash nineteen is a resolution awarding contract to Suburban Engineering for the Mercer Street Pumping Station Pump Replacement Project, and one thirty-one dash nineteen is a resolution authorizing a refund for youth basketball. Do we need a motion?
Need a motion to accept the consent agenda as it was read?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed.
Okay, and then we need a resolution one thirty-two dash nineteen, is a resolution authorizing a raffle license for UNICO of Hackensack.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bategley is absent, deputy, I'm sorry, Mayor LeBrus.
I abstain.
Okay.
That's it, thank you. Right, so, need a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anybody from the public who would like to speak, please come forward, you will have three minutes, give your name and address to the clerk.
Gene DePasco, Parker Avenue, um, resolution one twenty-nine nineteen, clerk of the works for M&amp;M Building, don't usually do clerk of the works unless there's a problem, um, paying fifty thousand dollars to an engineer to oversee contractor that we pay, I don't know how much already, what's the problem with the M&amp;M?
Sir?
The City of Hackensack has retained the services of Darmofalsky Engineering for clerk of the works, because we need to sort out, we have some conflicted disputes between the contractor and DMR, and the only way to sort this out is to get a third party neutral. That fifty thousand dollars is not to exceed, no one said it was gonna cost fifty thousand.
Okay, so, we could not mediate, we don't have a project manager?
There is no project manager at the beginning of that project that could sort this out, so now, unfortunately, I have to unsort it out and figure out, yes, no, maybe of who did what and how it needs to be resolved.
Wait, we don't have a project manager?
We just have just hired two of them.
Just hired two of them?
Yes, we didn't have a project manager because we had a change of employee status here for the city.
We had Wayne, we had Flanagan, we had, we had, we had, but nobody was watching the story.
I never said that, you said that, I didn't say that.
We had project managers.
We had project managers on staff, there was some miscommunications of who was managing the project, and I'm fixing that as we speak.
And that's why the dirt was uncovered and there were problems?
I get it, don't usually ask the question unless I know the answer, so...
Next, please.
Good evening, everyone, Joe Summers, eight oh five seven F, I asked Mike Alagretta to be here with me, I know we missed the January eighth meeting?
Right.
For Stipe Park, having been a biology teacher and college professor for as many years as we have chromosomes, which is forty-six, we take a special interest in our parks and photosynthesis, ecology, I put in a proposal, a sketch, to allow ecological succession of the forest we have to Coles Brook, I'm sure the riverkeeper would be very pleased about that, Hackensack High School, Bergen Community College, other students could use that as a study area, and we think that would be very good, I know there's a bunch of plans, but when I stop at the city manager's office, everything, they don't have any site plans, they don't have anything available, so, before you do that, of course, the people in the neighborhood, and in any park neighborhood, would like to see what's going on and allow some input, to see the impact on our community.
You have obviously either not watched the council meetings online or been in attendance, there will be a public meeting, a review of what's proposed, we'll take community input, this was designed for that purpose, we're gonna meet and look at the preliminary plans privately first, and then it'll be a public forum to do exactly that.
Do you have a date?
I do not know, because I have to meet, make sure that these plans meet muster in the conditions that have been described for this to move forward.
And Stipe Park is a green acres area, that's correct? My kid said that, okay, so, no tree removals could take place, right?
I don't know if that's true, that there could be no tree removals.
How do you figure that, sir?
Well, I was on our shade tree committee for about twenty years, and I know curbside, people couldn't just remove trees without checking with our committee, and I'm sure with green acres, parks and areas, they don't just allow tree removal, some towns fine people for tree removal.
I don't know that they're percent true, because a lot of our parks that have fields on them have had trees removed for the fields and stuff like that, but we're not looking to pillage the woods at all, that's what we're trying to avoid.
Good, you must like Tony Mitchell's old song, that Big Yellow Taxi, it took paradise and put it in a parking lot?
I use that for example, I use FXM Lee for our new park at Atlantic Street, we did the opposite, we took down a parking lot and put up a park.
Exactly, that's what we did when we coordinated the Fairmount Creative Playground in nineteen eighty-nine, remember?
Yep, that's where they parked the cars, you're right, Joe.
We appreciate all the good things you folks do, thank you very much.
Thanks, yeah, there'll definitely be public input on this, we're in touch with a lot of people on this, I've spoken several times, Councilwoman Von Rudenberg's heading this up, but, you know, we all have a great interest in this, and we want it to be very successful, but we want it to be, to fit into the neighborhood as well.
We appreciate that, John, thank you, quality parks make a big difference in a community.
Absolutely, thank you. Where were you Saturday night, I thought you were going?
Where?
To the show Saturday, I thought you were going.
I was there, I asked for you, and no one knew where you were.
I was sitting right in the middle.
Excuse me?
I was sitting right in the middle.
You were?
Yeah, it was a great show. Yeah, it was a great show.
You mean the Virtuosi?
No, no, that was Sunday, I'm talking about Saturday night.
Oh, the Flor di Falla, Ocho, ouch.
They were good.
Very good. I loved it, it was terrific.
I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm Rich, Serbo, Spring Valley Ave, Hackensack. Just a couple comments, and then I'll say what I want to say. Carver Park Tennis Courts, wonderful that they're being done over, what about the rest? I mean, there are other tennis courts in town, are they being done too?
As previously explained, we're trying to get...
One at a time?
Well, we're, we're focusing on parks and making the improvements. Currently, Stipe is it. Obviously, we're going to resurface the tennis, the basketball court at Stipe, the dog park, a gazebo, and new bathrooms. Next, we'll either move to Columbus or one of the other parks, and we'll make all of those improvements.
So all the tennis courts will be resurfaced?
I said, we're working on those parks when we get to them, I'm not making the general statement that all tennis courts, eventually, whatever needs to be done, we do an assessment and then we move forward. If they need to be fixed, obviously, we want people to use them, we want people to be safe. Obviously, right now, Carver Park Tennis Courts are in a deplorable shape and no one can use them, and that was identified also by our GIF inspection.
Okay, so are the rest, so I just want you to know that, okay? So that's, that's first, I want to say that. Second, the Coles Brook that the gentleman just brought up, when I was a kid and a child, that... What the heck is this? What's going on here?
You doing the mic?
Okay, that Coles Brook, when I was a kid, was vibrant, everything lived in there, okay? Now it's dead, there's nothing in that water, it's, it's just a dead Coles Brook. So maybe you want to sort of have some input on, on that, because that area is kaput, okay? So that's, that's what I wanted to start, start comment with. Second, I just wanted to mention that, you know, Hackensack was, Hackensack was a colonial city, and in the 18th century, the British were in charge here. I think I've mentioned this last year, over the years, and one of, one of the, one of the demands by the residents, the colonials, people of Hackensack, was that they wanted to vote on taxes, okay? That was, that was one of the stipulations during the revolution against the British, right here in Hackensack. They wanted to vote, can we vote on what you're going to tax us on? So my comment is, I thought it was wonderful that, that we got a say when it came to the Board of Education spending bill, or bond, or whatever it was called, and at least we got a chance to say, we thought it was a little outrageous, and, and it was voted down. But what about everything else, okay? Do we get a chance to vote on what we're taxed on? I mean, there's multiple projects in town, there's taxes everywhere, it raises taxes on property, and like I said, it goes back to the 18th century, people begged for it, the British would never give it to them, okay? So I'm asking now, I don't, I don't want to sound like I'm talking to a British council here, but my, my request is, can we vote on what we're going to be taxed on? And the projects that you're spending on, instead of just a selective education spending, which I thought went well, that was a good thing, but what about everything else? Thank you very much, that's it, thanks.
All right. The bond, the school bond referendum was just in fact at a referendum, which means it goes to the public for a vote. Very rarely does that ever happen at a municipal level for a referendum. I don't even know if it does, Steve, does it?
I'm not sure.
I've never seen it happen.
I'm not familiar with that.
But there's a reason, and my answer would be to that is absolutely not, probably, because there is public input before we make our decisions, but all elected officials, whether it's this council or another council, council from years ago, councils in the future, are left with the task of making these decisions as a council for the betterment. And I wish, Mr. Serbo, you were here earlier, because Deputy Mayor Canestrino gave a great presentation on the pilot system. And I know you'd think it's a tax burden, but in the year 2024, the prediction is $10 million in revenue to the City of Hackensack. That's 10% of our city budget, basically, of the, of this, right?
Misoforshy, yes.
So in order to bring in 10% more revenue is incredible, and that's going to go towards infrastructure, towards lowering taxes, towards, you know, helping the citizens of this city. So I know you look at it as, you know, you often say it's a giveaway or whatever, it's the long-term effect that's going to happen, these things don't happen overnight. Kathy, you mentioned Jersey City with their pilots receives how much a year?
139 million.
They get $130 million from their pilots now, that goes right into the municipal government's coffers. Will never be like that, like Kathy said before, we're, you know, we're looking at like $10 million more revenue than we have right now. Right now, we, one pilot's active, because only one project's actually open, 266,000 dollars a year extra we get on a piece of property that was paying $60,000 a year. But, but these, over time, as these things start kicking in and they start paying, it's going to, we're going to, the citizens are going to reap the benefits, and that's really the long-term goal here. It's getting there that's the struggle, but we're getting there.
All right, but that wasn't my question.
Right.
I, I...
Can, I don't want to go back and forth, but if your question is, can we, can you vote on what decisions we make? No, the answer's no, that's why we have government, go ahead.
Yes, just for the record, we're having a goal-setting meeting on March 20th at 4:00 PM at this council chambers. That goal-setting is going to identify projects and costs that the city's proposed, we're going to take input, mayor and council are going to provide me with goals, department heads are going to provide, Jim Magan and I have sat down, the direction that came from the mayor and council, that we resolved our tax, I'll strike that, our issue of the $30 million for...
Tax appeals.
Tax appeals, and that will be resolved in approximately two more years. So now, we're working towards tax relief. The commitment for us is to offer zero increases for the, for, the goal is to offer zero increases for the next five years. So for the city to reestablish itself, fix its finances, continue to provide services, and fix infrastructure simultaneously by not increasing the taxes, I'd say that's pretty good, but I, you know, I don't, obviously, live in this community, and I'm not here to pat myself on the back, but the city is really working hard to attain and to achieve these goals. Mayor's already answered your question, the public doesn't get to decide whether they pay taxes or not, that's what you elect council members for. However, you, we do take your input, and we do, and I personally value what people say, I, I, I write through these pads all day long, I mean, I got stacks of them here, to get people's input, to make sure that we are on track, that we are following the recommendations and the input for people. So Jim Magan's not here today, but we're also going to have a public session at the introduction of the 2019 budget. We just spent, Jim and I spent a good part of this day basically making cuts of almost $600,000 to make sure that we stay within the 2% cap. So when people say that, oh, things have just run amok, and this horse has run out of the field in the barn and is just galloping away, I would beg to differ with people, we take this very seriously, and we're working hard to make sure that we obtain those goals and continue to provide excellent service.
Well, I, I...
Thank you.
If I could, if I could just add one more comment is, I think the, the key piece here, Rich, is the last few sentences that our city manager said is, everything that the city's done, and all the improvements, et cetera, have all been part of our budget, so they were all performed with us staying within side of those caps. For the school to have to take on such a large burden, a debt burden of $170 million, they couldn't possibly do that and stay within their cap, that's why it has to go for referendum. Now, there's everything that we've done so far up to date, we've been able to do and still stay under those guidelines, you know, we're not doing $170 million bonds, you know, maybe we're doing a $7 or $8 million bond to do a facility. So the school had to go out to a vote because they couldn't possibly do that and still stay in the cap. I believe that that's really where the difference, the difference lies, if that helps.
All right, my point was different, I guess...
Well, it's spending versus what you're spending it on, I think that's your question.
My point was that, that was never granted to the, to the townspeople, by the British, and it still hasn't been. We still never get to say anything about taxes or vote on how taxes are...
Point taken.
Okay? So that was my point, that's it.
Anybody else from the public? Seeing no one from the public, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed. Stephanie Von Rudenberg?
Good evening, everyone, thanks for coming out. I want to start off, the Johnson Public Library is, library is hold, holding their prom dress drive, annual prom dress, dress drive, and talk today. They're due April 6th, if anyone has any dresses they're looking to get rid of, they donate it to local high school girls that might need a dress for the prom, and I know a lot of our students at the high school actually utilize it as well as the middle school, so that's it.
Is this what happened at home?
I don't think so, I don't, I think they had some outside schools come in as well. Last year, I think they allowed to, they had a lot of dresses last year, so I think they had more than enough. Thank you to Deputy Mayor Canestrino for her explanation of the pilots. You know, it, it is difficult to understand, every time I listen and I research, I learn a little bit more, and of course, the numbers and the planning is, is so important, but I think also looking at what's going to be there. And as a parent and as a resident, you know, I get jealous of these other communities that have a great downtown where, you know, their kids could go, and when you're teenagers, you want to see your kids outside and mingling and socializing and, you know, giving back to the local businesses and not have to go to a mall and be inside all the time and drive, you know, to the plaza and drop them off and pick them up. You want them to stay local, you want them to see their community, you know, flourish. So I think that is also an important aspect as well, to always remember, you know, what's going to be there for the residents of Hackensack. Congratulations to all of the recipients of the proclamations tonight, it's nice to see, you know, the three gentlemen become so successful and hardworking, and they deserve that recognition. Two of them came from Parker School, which is where my children go, so I hope they, you know, fall in their footsteps and keep working hard, and obviously, they're doing something right over at Parker. And happy St. Patrick's Day, everyone, have a good night, thank you.
Thanks, Steph. I also think it was really very worthwhile to have the three gentlemen here be honored for Black History Month, and it's always nice to spend some time and hear about their achievements, but also hear about their past and their roots and their time that they've spent here in the City of Hackensack. Also want to make a point that we had the Black History Month recipients because we had the snowstorm last February, two weeks ago, so we had to carry some over, but this month is actually Women's Month, and I'd like to, you know, take a moment to say how much we appreciate all of the, the fine women that we have working here in the city. Most importantly, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Von Rudenberg for the great job that she's been doing here, and she's a wonderful asset to our council. Sitting right here, we have our clerk and our deputy clerk, we have Debbie and we have Allison, who, where would we be without them? They, they even have us lining up properly under the, for pictures, so we can count on them to, to really do everything we ask of them and to do it so wonderfully, we really appreciate you. And I think I just cannot say enough about our administrative assistant to Ted, I mean, where would we be without Jackie? I mean, we have such a wonderful asset in the city, we have a very, very fine young woman in Jacqueline Stout, who intercepts a lot of, a lot of the things to keep Ted sane, yes, Ted?
Yes, sir.
And does a wonderful job of it, and extremely efficient, and, and really is a true, true value to the city. So again, if you're out there in TV land, any of the, any of the wonderful women that work here in the city, we appreciate all that you do, and hope that that continues. Also like to say, happy St. Patrick's Day, I'm the only one that remembered to wear green, because I'm 50% Irish, and I have to enjoy my corned beef and cabbage on Sunday, and I hope everyone else does as well. This Thursday, I think Ted mentioned it earlier, there is a joink beefsteak dinner, everyone knows that they love beefsteak dinners, all-you-can-eat, wonderful filet mignon, it's at the, it's at the Alon, and it's hosted for a fundraiser for the chamber, the local Chamber of Commerce and our Crime Stoppers. So I think there's still tickets available, all the information is on the city website, if, we'll all be going, so if anyone, you know, has the opportunity, I think that would be a fine affair to get out and attend. I usually like to recap anything for redevelopment that appears on the docket, and there were a few tonight, so I'll just talk about them very quickly. One of them had to do about the Zabriskie Street redevelopment, remember, that was where the old county DPW was, so that is, you know, really on the north end of town, very close to the River Edge train station. So we're talking about a piece of property that was really bringing in zero tax revenue because it was a county facility, and they are going to be building 377 units, and we awarded them a 30-year pilot, and once they are 90% rented, that pilot has a minimum payment, they will be paying at a minimum $2 million a year to the city. So, and that will only increase as their revenues grow at a 15% revenue. So that, that is going to be a wonderful project, and it's certainly a great asset and contributor to the city. Two other smaller projects just were designated for redevelopment, and they're entertaining some smaller projects. One of them was 17 Mercer Street, that's near the old colonial storage and moving, kind of that brick building that's sitting there on Mercer Street, they're looking to put 32 units, so small development, but nonetheless, it will certainly revitalize that area and, and bring more revenue into the city, we haven't gotten into the full financials on them yet. And the other one is, everyone knows Bruce the Bed King, now on the north end of town on Upper Main Street, they're also looking to convert to residential with some retail on the first floor, and they're looking for about 61 units there, so also another smaller scale. But we're seeing more and more, some of the larger ones, some of the smaller ones, and I really think that this is what we want, we want the character of the city, you know, to not just look like a wall, we want it, we want it to differentiate one to the other, and to see some small businesses that want to stay and flourish remain there. So as the Main Street develops, as Stephanie said, all of us are going to get to enjoy it, you know, it'll be a location that we can all feel comfortable and have new retail services that we can enjoy, and as well as welcoming, welcoming new folks to come and live in our downtown. I'm going to thank everyone for coming, and have a nice evening, and enjoy St. Patty's Day.
Hey.
Baseball and soccer, I'm still taking applications for this spring's upcoming season. I want to congratulate all the recipients for Black History Month. Kathy, great presentation, explaining the city pilots, once again, like Stephanie, I learned something, every time you speak it, it's amazing. Congratulations to the high school boys' basketball team, they were the ninth seed, they went on a Cinderella run, and they lost in the state finals this year. Last, not least, kudos to FDU, they won tonight, they're going to March Madness, they're on the Hackensack side, so always big up FDU. I will be there Sunday when they announce what team they play.
Tina Coe.
Thank you for coming out, God bless.
Thank you. I also want to congratulate the honorees for African American History Month, three great young gentlemen representing the black community and representing the City of Hackensack, they do a great job, kudos to them. I also want to congratulate the high school basketball team on that run, from the ninth seed? Ninth seed, made it all the way to the finals against, they lost to Union, I believe?
Union City.
Union City, so great, great run by them, they're a young team, I believe, so they're going to get better and better and better, so that's great. We also had a, you know, the state wrestling championships were about a week and a half ago, made a young man from Hackensack win a state title, unfortunately, it wasn't for Hackensack High School, he wrestles for Bergen Catholic, but he is a Hackensack resident, and his name is Chris Foka, so kudos to him. Being a wrestling fan, I got to give kudos to Rutgers University, who wrestles in the toughest division you could possibly be in with the Big Ten. Rutgers had two champs in the Big Ten, and New Jersey overall, six of the 10 champions in the Big Ten were from New Jersey, so that's pretty awesome, so New Jersey's a tough wrestling state, we all, we, us wrestling people knew that, right, Steph? So that was, that was pretty good. And Little Evan, Stephanie's son, was in the States down in Tom's River?
Trenton.
Or in Trenton, over the weekend, so he made it down to the States, so that's good stuff for us, and he'll hopefully be wrestling for the commons someday. And the dog park, I'm looking for, I'm really looking forward to this dog park taking shape and, and working with the community to get this thing going, and with Stephanie's leadership, this is going to be a great facility. And looking forward to sitting with the public, and first, I'm looking forward to seeing the plans, make sure they're, you know, online with what we're looking for, and then presenting them to the public, and then getting their input and tweaking it, whatever needs to be tweaked, and getting it done. So looking forward to the M&amp;M Building opening, we have a prediction date on that yet?
Their prediction is in May, my prediction is a little closer to June.
Yeah, it'll be open for the summer, folks. It's, it's a little behind schedule, we had a couple issues over there, but it's going to be a beautiful building. If you haven't seen the building, and you've been, remember the M&amp;M Building the way it was, take a ride down there, it's incredible to see, what a transformation, it's going to be great. And from there, we're going to move forward with, I know we're doing some work on the Johnson Park Field pretty soon, resurfacing, which is necessary, and the next project will take place with the indoor sports facility, so looking forward to that as well. All things we've been planning... All things we've been planning for years and keeping our promises. So with that, everybody have a wonderful St. Patrick's Day, don't eat too much, don't drink too much, don't drink and drive, we passed the bill tonight, or a resolution tonight stating just that, and have a wonderful holiday weekend and get home safe, thank you.
Okay.
Motion to close.
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed.